Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council on today's September 19, 2017. Speaking of that, I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to please silence all electronic For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Bob Ward.
Let it, Brian. We acknowledge that the actions of this council must address the needs of our city and take into account the interests and rights of our citizens. And we ask that we be mindful of and seek ways individually and as a community to aid those and other communities who have been dislocated and are suffering from the devastation caused by Hurricanes Harvey and Irma. And we ask that our efforts be guided by clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, and our decisions with impartiality. And we ask that our actions be guided by the high standards of ethics and that our personal fates give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us tonight. Amen.
We have a special recognition this evening. Call on Nolan Kirkman, Director of Development and Technical Services.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to recognize Lanny Rue, who will join here. Lanny Rue is our city engineer. This is his last council meeting, and he's torn up about it.
I can tell.
Yeah, it's pretty epic.
So, Lanny has been with us for over 11 years, retired on October 1, and he's been with municipal government for over 30 years, so, actually, over 33. So, I just want to take this time to say thank you for all your work and effort, and we've enjoyed working with you. So, if we could just give him a round of applause.
Speak.
Speech, speech. As much as I love standing in front of these things, I'd be remiss if I didn't address council. It has been a great career. It was a very smart move on my part to move over here from another location. I've not regretted the move for a moment. It's been, had all kinds of support, from staff especially, and from council, and I think the department will be left in very capable hands with Todd Lambert taking over the helm, and the department's in great shape with personnel. So, with all that, I do appreciate everything, and thank you very much for your support over the years. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Before councilor minutes, from, sorry, this time, council recognizes Renee Ward.
The purpose of council is my responsibility to remind your community to avoid conflicts of interest in that of their reports. This time, I ask that there be potential conflicts between the two parties.
Yes, I have one. For item H, Greenways and Bicycle Ways Plan, I would like to ask the council to recuse me, even though I don't think that, my son works for Alta, and he was not involved in this Greenways plan. However, just to be completely transparent and ethical, I'd like to be recused from voting on this.
I move to recuse Mr. Hikes from that item.
Second. All those in favor of recusing councilmember Hikes on that item, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Before council are minutes, from the August 14, 2017 work session, and the September 5, 2017 city council meeting, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Move for approval. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's passed. Before council are add-on consent agenda items, item H, Greenways and Bicycle Ways Plan, and item I, Burlington Downtown Revitalization Project, do I hear a motion to add these items to the consent agenda?
I move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Before council is the agenda, including add-ons, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion if we adopt the agenda with the add-ons requested.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda with add-ons, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Agenda has been adopted. Before, next item is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to adopt an ordinance approving the following traffic commission recommendations, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda. Item B, to adopt a resolution authorizing the extension of lease of city-owned surplus property to American Tower Asset Sub LLC. Item C, to adopt a resolution setting a date of public hearing for October 3, 2017, to consider the Woodland Heights Apartments Phase III contiguous voluntary annexation. Item D, to approve a 5 percent pay increase for city attorney David Hoffman, effective July 1, 2017. Item E, Budget Amendment 2018-13 Police RICO Appropriations, details of which are spelled out in your agenda. Item F, Budget Amendment 2018-14 Animal Services Donation, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda. Item G, Budget Amendment 2018-15 Animal Services Donation, the details of which are spelled out in the agenda. And item H, to adopt the City of Burlington's Greenways and Bicycle Bicycle Ways Plan, which is available online. Item I, to approve a Burlington Downtown Revitalization Project funded by the State of North Carolina in the amount of $50,000 to construct public restrooms in the vicinity of the Historic Depot. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's passed. Before council this evening, our number of public hearings. Public hearing number one, a public hearing has been set to receive citizen comments on the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the Community Development Program year 2016 to 2017. At this time, council recognizes Community Development Administrator Sonia Brandl.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Today, the Planning and Community Development Department is before you to ask for approval of the CAPR for program year 2016. This public hearing to date was publicized on September 6 in the newspaper, and the CAPR has actually been on display in the Planning and Community Development Office. Actually did at the request of a citizen, tried to post it online, did have some technical issues that Rachel and myself will be looking into because the link is currently broken, but we will fix that shortly and hopefully have that fixed by tomorrow. Do you all have any questions for me tonight?
Were there any comments about it from the general public? I'm asking you, did you get any?
No, I'm sorry. No, I did not receive any comments from the general public on it.
Any other questions from council?
Sonia, could you just remind me what the money for the Richmond Hill project is?
So, the money for the Richmond Hill project was for site plan development and for marketing uses for soft cost before the actual hard cost development or construction. There was also some issues, I think, with a stream or river that was, I think, found near the site, and so there had to be some site plan and development work that went on with that, and so the CDPG money went to that use.
Any other questions?
Since that project is on hold, will we hold the money till the project starts continuing again?
So, well, I'll say to my knowledge, it's not on hold, but we will continue to cover any costs that have to deal with site plan development, so that is what this money is specifically for.
For the site.
Right, so it's not for anything else besides that.
All right.
Any further questions? Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Do I hear a motion regarding the item?
Not so far adopting.
Move that we approve the submission of the CAPR to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has been approved. Thank you, Sonia. Item two on our agenda, a public hearing has been set to consider adopting the flood insurance rate maps and revised flood damage prevention ordinance. This time, council recognizes senior civil engineer David Bowman.
The National Flood Insurance Program, or NFIP, is a federal program that enables property owners in participating communities to purchase insurance against potential flood damage. Basically, FEMA provides the technical data, the flood hazard data, in the form of flood insurance rate maps showing the potential flooding areas, and it's up to the community, the participating community, to pass a flood damage prevention ordinance. Periodically, FEMA updates this hazard information, which they have recently done, and has revised their flood insurance rate maps. Those maps have to be adopted by the local participating communities, and they also produced a revised model ordinance, which our ordinance is modeled after theirs, and we have to also adopt an ordinance to match the model. So, that's what we're looking at tonight, is adopting those maps and the ordinance. If we don't adopt them, then we will be suspended from the NFIP.
Mr. Mayor, if I could draw to the council's attention, on page nine of your draft, Section Eight, I have prepared some substitute language and put it in front of each one of you. The model ordinance that came from FEMA did only include remedies for violations in the form of criminal sanctions, and our previous draft, added from 2006, had also included civil remedy for violation of this section that I've gone and added back into this new draft at $500 a day for any violations. And we also have added some language for injunctive relief that's provided by Rule 65 of the Federal Rules of Civil Procedure and General Statutes. And I would ask that you just take that and substitute it in under Section Eight on page nine of your draft.
Any questions regarding that change? Any other questions from council? This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Do I hear?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Do I hear a motion regarding?
I move that we adopt the flood insurance rate maps and adopt the revised flood damage preventing ordinance.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Item three, a public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone from R9 Residential District to CR Conditional Residential District for the use of an elementary school, middle school, and high school. The property is located at 1615 Greenwood Terrace, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 123243. At this time, council recognizes Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. We went over this last night, but I'm going to do it again for you. This rezoning request has the recommendation of staff and the Technical Review Committee. The Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending the request to council unanimously. The commission found that the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining properties is in keeping with land uses already in the area and that is consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The plan for this project meets all of our requirements. This school expansion is representative of the type of use that our comprehensive plan states is generally considered good for locating in neighborhoods. And Mr. Chad Huffine is here to talk about this request.
Hi, my name's Chad Huffine. I'm the civil engineer for the project. I'll just add or supplement what Amy said. First of all, thank you for hearing our case. Thank you to planning for approving the motions and bringing it to you. The project was presented to the area neighbors in addition to the staff. We held a meeting at the school and entertained questions at that time. We've also met with some of the neighbors individually. We feel like we've either addressed their conversational questions or directed them to the appropriate staff members, so I'm here to answer any questions that you may have or that any surfaced during the public hearing. And if you have any questions for me, I'll stay here until we're done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, we close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Public hearing is closed. I hear a motion regarding this rezoning.
Based on staff recommendation and P&amp;Z, I'd make a motion that we approve the rezoning as requested.
Second. Any questions regarding the motion as before? All those in favor of the rezoning, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Do I hear a motion, a statement of consistency?
I also make a motion that we approve the statement of consistency, whereas the city council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the City of Burlington's Comprehensive Land Use Plan and that this action is reasonable and in the public interest and that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity and reflects the changing land use patterns in the area.
Second. All those in favor of the statement of consistency motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On behalf of the Burlington School, our firm, and those involved with the project, parents and the kids, we'd like to thank you very much.
Thank you. Item four on our agenda, a public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone from O&amp;I Office and Industrial District and R9 Residential District to CI Conditional Industrial District for the continued use of and expansion of the airport. The properties are located on the east side of Alamance Road and the north side of Rock Lane Drive, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 120215 and 120216. This time, council again recognizes Amy Nelson.
Thank you. This rezoning request has the recommendation of staff. Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending the request to council unanimously. The commission found that the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining properties is in keeping with land uses already in the area and that is consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The airport is adding property for future needs, much like the requests we brought you in the past. The airport is growing use in our community and is one of the main components of the area named the Carolina Corridor Commerce Park by our comprehensive plan, and it's a jewel in our city, I'm sure everybody would agree. And Mr. Dan Danielly is here to speak about this.
Well, thank you, Council, for hearing us tonight. I want to thank P&amp;Z and staff for the work that's put together and supported in doing this. This is, we're looking at the last two of seven parcels that we've been putting together for our future air operations center. Now, there may be some more parcels to purchase down the road to make this complete, but these were the initial tracts of land. They will total just under 60 acres, and this will get us started with the development. Great support from everyone. Where are we now with this? Of course, owning the properties first, and what are we doing? We do not own these two tracts until next week after we get this agreement. But the caveat with the landowners was that we would get it rezoned for our use first, and then we're ready to close on property, I think, on the 28th of this month, actually. With that, we'll begin to work with environmental folks and come up with a real, true plan. What you've seen so far has been very conceptual, but once we get the environmental work done and completed, then we can see what we can actually do with the property from there. We'll be coming back to you with plans to share with you and going forward. Any questions from anyone?
Any questions from council?
What are we going to name this thing? Alamance Burlington International?
Who the politician I am, how about the Silo Fossett Field?
I'll take that. You still have the Alamance Burlington, you made a field there. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions from council? This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding this rezoning request?
This is, he's going to name the field after me, Al.
Included in your motion.
Yeah. It's only. Only if you do that.
Statement of consistency.
Just the motion.
Okay. I move that we approve the rezoning.
Second. All those in favor of approving the rezoning, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Okay.
I also make a motion that the city council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the City of Burlington Comprehensive Land Use Plan and that this action is reasonable and in public interest and that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity and reflects the change in land use pattern in the area, and the field would be named Silo Fossett.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of the statement of consistency, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Statement passed. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dan, for your continued work.
Thank you, and, you know, thank the neighbors. We have great neighbors and community support, so thank you all.
Thank you.
As someone who grew up under an airline traffic pattern, I know how important it is to have helpful neighbors, so, who get good nights' sleep when the airport works with them, so. Item five on our agenda, a public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone from R9 Residential District to I1 Plan Industrial District to CR Conditional Residential District for the use of an existing church with the addition of a childcare center and 70, with 70 children and an elementary school with 35 students. The property is located at 1935 Hanford Road, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 132796. Council again recognizes Amy Nelson.
Thank you. This rezoning request has the recommendation of staff and the Technical Review Committee. Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending the request to council by a vote of four to one. The commission found that the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining property is in keeping with land uses already in the area and that is consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. There are a variety of uses in the area, and this rezoning shouldn't cause any major impacts to those land uses. There will only be interior changes made to the church with no exterior construction. Child daycares and schools are allowed by the ordinance through conditional zoning, and again, this is something that would be considered a good use in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And Mr. Kenny Gudere is here to speak to this matter.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, and all the city officials. Thank you for giving us time to talk about this. Thirty, almost 34 years ago, my wife and I moved to this town, didn't know one person, and we started with a dream and a vision to reach out, and somebody I met the first week or two I was here, he said, "Where are you from?" I said, "From Missouri." He said, "Now, let me tell you something." He said, "If you're not born here, you ought to at least die here." So, I think I'm headed in that direction. I'd prefer the rapture, but, yeah, so, we're thankful, we're thankful. And we've tried to keep the vision out there of reaching, we have a lot of youth in our church, a lot of children, we're thankful for that. And so, we've always had a dream and a vision to have a school, daycare, to reach out, because even, just like this past Sunday, we brought in, through our vans, 100, over 150-something children, 150-something children. We bring them from every area of town, and that's one good thing about, if you come to church Sunday, you'll see about 20 different nations represented. And so, we believe in reaching out, having a dream and vision, and this is part of our future dream and vision. Thank you for giving us time, express that.
Thank you. Any questions from council? This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers.
If you could come to the mic for the viewers at home. We're still working in wider seating aisles. If you could state your name.
Jose Alegría from Burlington, North Carolina. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. As a former bus rider from the War of Pentacles Church.
I had no idea you'd go here, Matt.
And as a former youth member from the War of Pentacles, I believe that what the church is doing, it is wonderful work. They used to be, they still have a building on Spence Street where I grew up. Now, they are located on Hanford Road, and the work that they are doing is amazing, just like Reverend Gordier mentioned. The church is very internationally diverse from many, many nationalities that they bring these childrens from, many points of view from our county. I used to ride the bus from Howe River all the way to Spence Street where I grew up, as I mentioned before. And I think that this move that the church is doing, it is a wonderful move for the members of the church and non-members, I believe, that they will continue doing the work that they have been doing since 2001, when I started going to the church, to the present. So, in retrospect to what the church is asking, I believe that it is a great move for the church and for our community in that part of the county, which is right on the other side of the highway as well. Thank you.
Could you state your name and address just one more time, so we have it on record?
Jose Alegría, 1024 Stokes Street, Burlington.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room who would like to speak? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Is that all right of council to allow one more comment?
Absolutely. I'll withhold my motion.
If you could state your name and address.
My name is James Harris. I'm the founder of Children's House Montessori School, and I appreciate y'all having me here tonight. Thank you very much.
Could you state your home address as well?
My home address is Burlington, 4004 Dr. Pickett Road, Burlington, North Carolina.
Thank you.
I'm the founder of Children's House Montessori School, and the person that's running my school now is an operator. I've got a lease agreement with her, and she's trying to take my school now, that's And she's trying to take my school now, that's been in existence since 1993, and divert it to this church. All right. As of September the 5th of this year, there was a zoning meeting to, if they could even get to this far. And they started their, they started their, they started their school August the 28th of September. In other words, they started without permission, which I find very, it's bad, because me and my wife, we started, when we started our school, we had to go through all the permissions and everything. And here they started, they're actually already got their school started without permission. And churches are a place for forgiveness, but now we're in a place of permission. And I think they're making a mockery of this council by actually starting it without getting And I think this should be tabled. I'm in a litigation with these people right now. Denise Marte, she did the application for the zoning. She's not here tonight, but I'm very upset, as you can see. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
A move.
Her.
Let me just say, in reference to Jim, is that we were asked if we could use, have one classroom to use for overflow. So we did that for two weeks, and we allowed that, just like we've allowed many people in this town to use our building for different purposes. It was only two weeks. We have not had any class since then, but they had an overflow problem. And she, the lady said, "Could we use the building for one classroom?" I said, "That'd be okay," just like we have done for many. But this is a separate issue. It has anything to do with the rezoning.
What was the lady's name? Oh, Reverend, what was the lady's name who asked you about the overflow?
Denise Marte.
Denise Marte.
Any further questions regarding that?
I can vouch for what he's saying, because my son, my son, all three of my kids go there.
If you could state your name and address.
My name is Jason Pickard. I live on 1949 Hanford Road, and I can vouch for what he's saying, because all three of my kids go to that school. There was an issue, and I know because I do contract, some contract work to help maintain the facilities, to make sure they're in good working order for the children, for the staff there, on 62 right there for Children's House Montessori as well. So I can vouch for that as far as him saying that they already started it, because it's not even there anymore. My son goes to Children's House Montessori, where they do things there in that school. There was an overflow issue, and so they resolved it. I know, because I built some of the stuff for the kids to have somewhere to seat. Thank you.
If you could state your name and address.
I'm Kathy Cole. I'm Jim Harris's sister, 2426 Edgewood Avenue. And I think, and tell me if I'm wrong, maybe their school was discontinued after I spoke to Mr. Butler. And Mr. Butler, as a kindness to me, looked into the situation. I think he talked to Mr. Watkins. And if I'm not misunderstanding, Mr. Watkins, did you then contact, or someone contact the church and tell them that they had to move the school, that they could not?
Do you? I'd prefer to miss Nelson.
It was Mr. Joey Lee, our zoning administrator.
I mean, it's, the whole truth isn't being told here, and as a Christian, I'm very concerned with this. And that's all I can say, Reverend.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
A move.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Public hearing has been closed. Any questions from counsel?
I think I got one, Mr. Houghman. With this on the litigation, can we still approve the zoning?
This litigation is over a contract issue between the landlord and the Lacy of the property out there, and the operator of the property out there, Montessori School. It has nothing to do with the issues for you this evening. You have a rezoning issue for you.
Separate property than what we're looking at.
Not even addressing this property at all.
So we could, we don't have any say in whether, what operates there. It's just that we are saying this property should be rezoned to allow the, a school of some kind.
Whether this property is appropriate for the proposed use is the issue.
Any other questions from counsel? Do I hear a motion from counsel regarding this rezoning?
I move that we approve the rezoning.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to approve the rezoning, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. Do I hear a motion regarding the statement of consistency?
Burlington City Council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the City of Burlington Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and that this action is reasonable and in public interest, and that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity, and reflects the change in land use patterns in the area.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the statement of consistency, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. That concludes our agenda items. We have one public comment, and this time counsel recognizes Jean Kates.
Good morning, Mayor.
Welcome.
How y'all doing? I come with a question, and the question is this. You ever heard of ugly food?
What?
Ugly food. You want me to see, I'll tell you what ugly food.
I hadn't heard of it, but I've seen it. I'll cook some. But anyway, what ugly food is, is when you go in a grocery store, you see a carrot straight, right? When a carrot goes like that, that's ugly food. When a tomato is too big, that's ugly food. When a watermelon is bleached on one side, that's considered ugly food.
And buyers from produce that all over different chains will not buy that food. It was introduced to me in April, and so I checked it out. As you know, I have access to some trucks, and we started going to different farms that was inviting us. So I took, I like teenagers. I took a whole bunch of teenagers, and we went out to a 50-acre farm, Sawyer's Farm, and he said, "All this is ugly food. All this is ugly food." He said, "Take it, or we're going to destroy it." So we picked 500 tomatoes, 138 watermelons. I forgot how many snap beans. And in three days, they were given away. So we all got together again and started talking about, okay, we got calls from Georgia, we got calls from South Carolina, and now we're getting calls from other states saying, "If you want our ugly food, you come and get it. We'll box it for you." Now, when a machine goes through, now when I was growing up and you grew potatoes, you had to kind of dig into them and pull them out. But they got machines now that do that. But the machine, what it does now is it has to be a certain size, or it drops it. And it goes, it goes bad. That goes with apples and everything else. So from friends of mine that we worked together on my board, and we got together, and now are able to go get this food. Reason I'm here tonight, and I could ask you today, but anyway, I know panhandling is illegal, but see, we cannot give, we cannot sell this food. Now, this week, next week, we will go back to another farm, and we got two acres of tomatoes and an acre of watermelons. We have to give it away, just like Wrangler. Wrangler has donated to me over $500,000 in blue jeans in the past seven years. The premise is, we have to give them away. But what I'm here to ask tonight is, we want to go to Tucker Street, we want to go to Beaumont, we want to go to areas where people are needed, with some of that city property. Is that panhandling, and are there other permits that we have to get to be able to give this food away, since we may be on city property?
Would that be a question for our city attorney?
Is it on city property?
Most time, we're not on city property, but I
don't know who owns Burlington House. I'm going to call Alan Blue tomorrow and talk with him, but would we be able to go on Burlington House and property, give us fruit, and give us vegetables away? There's nothing wrong with it. We've been doing it, we did it all summer so far. And the question is, will we get in trouble for going on city property, possibly, if it's Burlington Housing, and giving the food away?
I don't believe you're going to be on city property, but we'll be able to get in touch with the housing authority for you and get back with you first thing in the morning.
Our goal is this, you see all these food trucks running around, selling food. We got trucks that's going to go around and give it away. And it's always going to be those vegetables that come, that me and the teenagers have gone all over. It'll be peaches from South Carolina, we'll take our trucks down, they'll have them waiting there. Reason they can't sell them, they're not perfect size. And so if you go online, look up ugly food, you'll find that it is a kind of a movement, but it's only way you can get it is you have to give it away. And so many kids, we see, I gave away 138 watermelons, and about five or six of them I sit out there, we can, we mean kids ate. So these kids and people in our neighborhood, in our area need it. And as you know, we're going to Texas at the end of the month, but there's a lot of families here that are having an hurricane in their own lives, and they need something. They need something better than, we've talked about nutrition, you can go to Wendy's and get you a Junior Pheasberg for a dollar and something, but they need something more nutritious. They need something that's good for them. Why waste that food when we can get it and bring it in? We just don't want to get in trouble, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you for your.
I'd just make a suggestion, just for the comfort of you and the folks that you're, that are volunteering. Might would be a good idea, just for clarity, David, if we'd meet with them, be sure there's no ordinance violation, just to give you guys a clear mind on what you're doing.
We don't want to go and do something, you know, all of a sudden, we just broke some law.
And that way, you're knowledgeable then, and you guys know, and that way, I don't see anything in the world with what you're doing to be in violation of anything, but just in case someone won't stutter, complaining, it'd be nice if you knew exactly what you could and couldn't do, and the city attorney would be able to share that with you.
Also contact Ms. Veronica Revels at Burlington House and Authority. She's the director there.
Okay.
Amy, did you?
And I was also going to say, have you been in touch with the Alamance Wellness Collaborative?
I don't know yet.
Okay. I can put you in touch with them, and I'm sure they can help you, because they're working on food.
We got a 53-foot trailer, and they said when we come, it'll be filled up. So you guys be able to move it. So that's why we, we all want to get out there, we don't have to go anywhere. That's why. Thanks.
Thank you for teaching us about ugly foods.
I just bought all of that.
That concludes the public comment. Another city council comments this evening.
Got one. Laney, thank you so much for the service. You've helped me out quite a bit on projects, and I appreciate your effort and the mission and the luxury you have. Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot.
Chief Smythe. Yeah, if we could, I think counsel would like to recognize Chief Smythe on his recent appointment to the Kalia Commission. For the audience, if you could share just a little about Kalia and their role, and what the commission does.
Yeah, sure. So Kalia is the formal accrediting body for police agencies in the United States and internationally. There are 18,000 police departments in America that are eligible to participate, about 1,000 do, and get accredited through that body. And so there are 21 commissioners that set those standards and rule on agencies getting accredited, so I was appointed to that governing body of that agency, so that's what it does.
Of which the 21, whether 10 or 11 are law enforcement?
Yes, or 11 are law enforcement, 10 come from academia and business, so it's a pretty select group. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And our department has been certified by Kalia for how many years now?
29 years.
29 continuous years.
Yes, sir. Meeting all the highest standards in our professionalism in everything we do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank everyone who visited[1732.19]